All right, Ingrid, thanks for being back. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order, please join us in the flag salute.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay. So, city attorney wants to report out from closed session?
The council had on its closed session real property negotiations to give direction to the real property negotiator concerning a vacant parcel at the southwest corner of Bay Shore and Old County Road. Council gave direction to the executive director and the matter will be returned to the council in closed session following those negotiations between the negotiator and the potential licensee of that property.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. So, we have adoption of the agenda. Any items that are not, or, excuse me, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got an operating menu and that brings us to oral communications, number one. For any item that is not on the agenda, now is your time to speak. I don't have any slips and I don't see any hands. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Our first one, under item A, is Brisbane Village Helping Hands. Nancy, come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Coleman and I appreciate the opportunity to make a brief presentation to you tonight. First, on behalf of the Brisbane Village Helping Hands Board, Cindy Rudolph, Sherri Goodwin, Karen Latham, Cece Herman, Elaine Porter, and our newest member, Tony Press, and myself, I want to once again thank the council and city staff for all the support you've given us over the past years to enable us to build and maintain Brisbane Village Helping Hands. I believe most, if not all, of you are familiar with our organization, but for anyone in the audience who may not know, we are an independent, nonprofit, community-based, all-volunteer organization whose mission is to promote aging in place in Brisbane and help our older residents stay connected to the community. We do this by providing volunteer services and opportunities for social interaction. These include transportation, minor home maintenance and repair, companionship, help with technology, and occasional social gatherings. And speaking of social gatherings, I want to just take this opportunity to plug our next social gathering, which is happening this September 15th from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Sunrise Room at the Corner of Visitation in San Francisco. There'll be food and drink, music by local musicians Kathleen and Henry Salvia, who are wonderful, and I hear Jerry Cool's gonna play with them as well. And it's a great opportunity to meet village members and volunteers and find out more about us, so everyone is welcome, so I just thought I would give us a little plug there.
And Nancy, what's the time?
It's 3:00 to 5:00, next Saturday, the 15th, which is next Saturday. We do this twice a year and we've had really good attendance from members and volunteers, so it's been really fun. Well, we've been operational for two and a half years and to date, we've provided 295 services to our members. And members must be 55 or older, live in Brisbane, and pay $20 a year in dues. We now have 52 members. One of our members unfortunately passed away this year and another moved away, so we had 54. But, and as I reported last year, these services tend to be mostly in the area of transportation to medical and other appointments, but they're also for minor home repair and maintenance and other things that we provide. We're growing slowly but steadily. In addition to increased membership, we've added six new volunteers over the last year for a total of 54. And so far, our volunteers have been ready and able to fulfill almost all of the requests made by our members. We continue to keep our regular expenditures at approximately $4,000 a year. I have provided a handout to the city clerk, I don't know if you've gotten it yet, but anyway, it has a, just like a basic breakdown. Basically, the grants that we get from the city and from the Brisbane Lions Club cover the bulk of our expenses and the dues we receive from members fill in the gaps and provide a bit of a cushion. At times, we receive some donations, but these are inconsistent and we really can't count on them. For example, in the last year, we got some donations from a village member and volunteer who had a program through her work that gave donations to the nonprofit of their choice. She's since retired, so that's not happening anymore, so we can't really count on those as an operational budget. But, anyway, so that's why I put, in this handout, I put donations in sort of a separate category because they're pretty much episodic. And finally, on the subject of finances, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge and express our appreciation for the financial support we've received from the Brisbane Lions Club over the past few years. The funding from the Lions and from the city cover, as I said, cover insurance and other ongoing expenses and these generous grants have allowed us to create a sustainable working model for our organization. In the year to come, we hope to continue our path of slow, steady growth. We know there are more Brisbane residents who could benefit from participating in the village than we presently serve and our efforts for outreach are ongoing and we seek to ensure that more of our seniors have the opportunity to access the services and opportunities for social connection that we provide. Like, for instance, we recently met with the fire department staff and the police department staff, just because they do come into contact with older residents sometimes and we want to make sure, we wanted to make sure they're aware of our program and that they can tell people about us if they think that that's appropriate. So, we're very grateful for your generous support and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them and we hope to see you on September 15th.
Great.
Any questions from anybody?
Council questions? Anybody have questions?
Yeah, just, well, just great job and thank you for initiating, you know, a few years ago to, to think about our seniors.
Yeah, well, thanks.
And keeping it local.
Thanks for your support. That's great.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Okay, under next presentation, item B, which is recognition for AYSOs, Mark Sakaguchi. And I got a little proclamation here I'd like to read, Mark, so you have to bear with me and then I'll let you have your rebuttal, okay? It's a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizing Mark Sakaguchi for his volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas, one of the cornerstone of childhood development in Brisbane is youth sports and playing in the American Youth Soccer Organization, AYSO, a nonprofit and the oldest national youth soccer program in the United States, working to provide a positive, fair, and fun soccer experience for all. Whereas, Mark joined the AYSO board in 2011 and has steered Brisbane AYSO for the past four years as regional commissioner in 2014, with the amazing support of his wife, Yoko. And whereas, Mark helped bring AYSO's vision to provide a world-class soccer program that enrich children's lives to fruition in Brisbane. And whereas, his work with AYSO has made a positive impact on hundreds of children, such as supporting Hugo Chavez for his U-12 boys team, all the way to the Western State Championships in Bakersfield in 2018. And whereas, Mark was especially valued for his consistent and dedicated support of the coaches, the referees, and the AYSO board, from providing more soccer balls or goals, laying out the white lines for the field boundaries, diffusing tense situations with his calm demeanor, to fulfilling holes in the soccer fields, soccer, to filling holes in the soccer fields at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. And whereas, Mark was instrumental in being able to garner support for AYSO from the City of Brisbane, Brisbane Elementary School, Lippman Middle School. And now therefore, it be resolved that after many years of dedicated and selfless volunteering, the City of Brisbane takes this opportunity to express our gratitude to Mark Sakaguchi and his family and wish them well in their new home in Los Angeles, dated the 6th day of September 2018. So, what I just read, we have on a plaque, Mark, and so we'll give you a rebuttal and then all, all your folks here, we can come up and take a picture with you. Here, we'll take it. This is for you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Conway. I'd like to thank the people of Brisbane for giving me the opportunity to contribute to the community. It's been the great seven years, four years as R.C., three years prior as a safety director. I'd like to thank City of Brisbane Parking Recs Department, Ricardo Monroe, Steve Beatty, and Tricia, I'm sorry, the last name, Vaquero. I'd also like to thank our sponsors, Brisbane Lions Club, Brisbane Hardware, Melissa Takeria, Brisbane Eagles, Brisbane Baylands, Golden State Lumber, and Dick's Sporting Goods, for their financial support. Because of cooperation with the city and our sponsors, we're able to fund our full scholarship program for, sports scholarship program for underprivileged children. We have about 10% of our kids in AYSO Brisbane that are fully paid for, so they're, they get to play without paying a fee. Without that funding, they have no other option, or they have less options to play sports in Brisbane or surrounding cities. Finally, I would like to thank the new board members of Brisbane AYSO, our new R.C., Jessica Tietia, Gary Lorenson, Renee Schaefer, Barbara Bouchard, Ernie Hiba, Hugo Gomez, Ken Buske, and our veterans, who are board members, who are supporting the new, new board, Leslie Davis and Peter Grace. And finally, thank you. Thank you for having us and thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Mark, and I'm really sorry to see you and your family leaving because it just wasn't AYSO that you guys were involved in.
Yeah, we did.
You were heavily involved in the schools and everything like that and this is a major loss for us, for the community, you know, to, to leave. And I'm not sure of your reasoning, I'm sure it's, it's a good reason, but still, it's a, for, for the Brisbane community, it's a sad reason, so, you know, good luck.
Thank you.
And, you know, for your folks, all the folks that are here for Mark tonight, if you'd like to take a picture together, that would be great, good, good time to do it and our city clerk will do that, so if you guys want to come up front here and gather and give something to, that Yoko and the kids can view. Yeah, yeah, I'll give it to Ingrid, she'll take a picture of you guys and so. Yeah, just, yeah, go ahead and block us out. It doesn't matter, it's okay. Yeah, you guys just gather around and. You got it? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mark. And good luck in L.A. and if, and if you don't like it, come back. I'd love to have you back. Okay, that brings us to item C, which is Caltrain Electrification Project Update. And I'm sorry, could you introduce, I know we've met before, but.
Oh, yeah, Brent Teigen, Government and Community Relations Officer for Caltrain.
Okay.
Good evening, council.
Good to see you again, Brent.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the Caltrain Electrification Project.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna give you a quick overview of Caltrain and the system in general and then go into the actual activities that are gonna affect Brisbane and the residents here. So, for the Caltrain system, we have 51 miles of corridor, a lot of which are owned by JPB or Caltrain, some of which are also owned by Union Pacific, which are south of the Tamian Station. So, this electrification project will just be from South, from San Francisco Station to the Tamian Station in San Jose. The corridor south of Tamian will still be operating under diesel. We have 32 stations along those 51 miles, 92 weekday trains that serve those stations, a number of accurate crossings, viaducts and bridges, as well as a lot of intermodal connections with ACE, Capital Corridor, and other trains, and Muni, Samtrans, et cetera. We also have one of the most robust bike commuter programs onboard. If you've been on Caltrain or have seen the news lately, Caltrain is, has seen exponential growth in ridership over the last 10 years, a lot of it due to our baby bullet service, which has express service between stations, and we are currently serving 65,000 riders per day on the trains. This is, can be a typical day on the trains, it can be packed, there can be standing room only, furthering the need for this electrification project, which will increase capacity. This is especially pertinent on a Giants Day or 49ers Day as well. Carrying those 65,000 people are an aging fleet, more than half of which is at or past its retirement age. These in red are shown, the retirement ages that are past, so 2015, 2017 were some retirement ages. Those are over 30 years old, built in 1985. Those are both our locomotives and our gallery cars that carry passengers. Caltrain serves a lot of businesses throughout the corridor and is a key component for transportation through the corridor. 75% of these folks for the, excuse me, for the Caltrain Commuter Coalition commute to work, 60% of those are choice riders, meaning they have other options, they can either drive or take other options to work, but they choose to take Caltrain. So, for the Caltrain Electrification Project in particular, this will electrify the 51 miles from San Francisco Station to Tamian Station. It will basically be the installation of poles, foundations, and wires that will provide electric power to the new electric trains, which we are also procuring as part of this project. We're procuring 96 electric trains that will help us convert 75% of our service into electric service. The remaining 25 will be considered diesel until we can get, secure additional funding to convert to 100% electric, which we hope is soon. This service will, this project will not increase the speed for Caltrain, it will still be 79 miles per hour, but it will allow us to accelerate and decelerate into and out of stations faster, which will provide efficiency for our service, so we'll be able to have more service in less amount of time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Yes.
Before you go on that?
Yep.
Because it's served on a lot of numerous boards through this process, back when they were looking at high-speed rail and stuff and the electrification of Caltrain, the original speed was supposed to be 115 miles per hour. Why is that now down to 79?
I think there are a lot of other components that need to happen in terms of get that additional speed. Curvature needs to be, some curvature on the tracks would have to be reassessed and moved. Those are the understanding that I have, I don't have understanding beyond that at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew that, that there was the 85 mile an hour curve in Brisbane, I think, which is the sharpest curve on the whole line.
Huh.
And it doesn't matter what kind of train you had at the time, the presentation said 85 miles an hour regardless of what the train is, so.
Yeah.
So, I'm just kinda like.
Yeah, at this point, it's 79 miles per hour, in the future, it could be, could be more.
Yeah, probably in the grade separations too, that currently do not exist.
There's a lot of components, signals, grade separations, curvature, yeah.
Okay.
This project is just the poles and wires, allows to electrify.
So, initially, it's gonna be 79, it could go faster though, right?
Correct.
Trains have the capability of going fast?
The trains will, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. As part of this project, we will also restore service, weekday service to Atherton and Broadway. Currently, those stations only have weekend service, so, and we will continue to have mixed fleet on our corridor, so ACE, Capital Corridor, and these, and Union Pacific will still operate on our corridor, they can operate under the lines without a problem. Just a quick summary of what a service benefit could look like. So, right now, for a five to six stop ride, that could be done in 60 minutes. After this project, we can look at 45 minutes for the same amount of stops. Or if you wanted to keep that 60-minute headway from San Francisco to San Jose, currently you can only make six stops, but in the future, with electrification, you can make 13 stops. And an example, for Redwood City, we could increase the number of trains per peak hour up to five. Just to note that currently, there are five trains per peak hour on the corridor, per direction. As part of this project, there'll be six, so it'll be an additional train per hour per direction. There's a lot of key regional benefits for this project, will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, have cleaner air, increase capacity, as well as a reduced engine noise for those living next to the corridor. A quick update on the electric trains, we are currently procuring, as I mentioned, 96 electric trains. We completed design in 2017, still working through a couple of design issues, but we hope to have a virtual reality tour in later this year or early next where folks can use a Google Cardboard, can download on their website, on their browser, and actually view the new trains through a virtual reality experience. So, I just want to get into the construction impacts that are happening in Brisbane and just quick update what those activities are. So, as I mentioned, 51 miles, across those 51 miles, we are installing 3,000 poles, as well as 10 traction power facilities, which will help regulate and distribute power to the electric system. So, for a quick overview of Brisbane, these are the tracks on the yellow here, you can see Bay Shore Station, there is one that paralleling station in the Bay Shore parking lot that will be, it's in San Francisco proper, but it's in the Bay Shore parking lot, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention as well. And I'll mention a little bit about that in the future. So, for pre-construction activities, a lot of work has been done already, utility surveying, geotechnical work, soil sampling, has all been done. They're currently doing foundation pothauling throughout the corridor. The good news is, they have done passes in San Francisco and Brisbane for that pothauling. They're going back and seeing any conflicts right now and redesigning and will have one more pass of pothauling later this year. After they have the redesign done of the pothauling, of the new, new locations for any poles or foundations, they'll come back and do tree pruning, no removal in the city, foundation installation, and pole and wire installation. So, this is what a pothauling crew looks like, just pretty much a big vacuum out there. They pothole every foundation location to check for utilities. This helps them so they can go out and do it once, not disrupt neighbors and get the job done in one go, instead of bringing the whole foundation crew out there, finding that there's a utility and going back and redoing it, so. A quick look at the timeline, pothauling will come back in Brisbane in 2018, in December of 2018. There will be some tunnel work in the San Francisco tunnels, which I'll mention in a bit, that will start in October of this year and go through March of next year. Tree pruning, no removal again for Brisbane, will happen spring of next year, and then foundation, pole, wire installation are late 2019. There is tree pruning in Brisbane that is required to allow us to have the electrical safety zone, which is in general 10 feet from any electrified component on the poles or wires, and so there are, these are the trees that will be pruned. There are three trees pruned, greater than 25%, those are all on Caltrain property. There are eight trees pruned less than 25% on Caltrain property, and there are three trees pruned less than 25% on Brisbane property. And those trees that are pruned greater than 25% will have mitigation measures in place, which are three replacement trees. So, for foundation, they excavate, so they, they excavate, they drill, and then they insert rebar, a steel rebar into the ground and pour concrete film. So, these are just some images of what the foundation work looks like, so that rebar cage on your right would be what's going actually into the ground to make sure there's enough support for the poles that'll be on top of these foundations. So, for pole installation, there are 3,000 throughout the corridor, as I mentioned, we are still in design for Brisbane, but we expect between 100 and 130 for Brisbane itself. Pole heights range from 30 to 45%, depending on which type they are. The distance from the track, the track alignment, all dictates which type of pole. If there's enough track between, if there's enough space between the tracks, we can install center poles with cantilevers on either side, or in some places where there's not enough space, we have to do side poles, so that dictates the height as well. In general, poles are spaced about 180 feet apart.
So, if I may, again.
Yes.
Brisbane is probably the only portion of the line, at least in San Mateo County, has a four-track alignment system?
Yes.
Yeah.
There are, the, Millbrae has three coming out of Millbrae Station, and some places there are portals, so there are two steel structures and then another structure on top with drop, drop tubes, trying not to be too technical with the terms, but pieces of equipment that, you know, yeah.
Sure.
So, there could be portals, there probably will be portals in the four-track areas, yes. This is what a basic pole looks like, a standard pole, the crews go out there in the middle of the night usually, since they're not, to not disrupt Caltrain service that's running during the day. These are pretty innocuous construction activities where the crews go out, they can do five or six poles in a night, and again, they can do foundations, five or six foundations a night, so they're moving 100 feet between 1,000 feet each night, so we're not in one area for too long. After the poles are installed, they will go back and string wire with the equipment on the right, you see that bright yellow train, it's a pretty quick mile run, they can do a mile run in a night and get those on the, on the poles. As I mentioned, there is a paralleling station in the Bay Shore parking lot, the northern part of that parking lot, again, not Brisbane proper, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. This paralleling station will allow us to regulate power to the overall system, so it'll provide power, it'll provide, it'll help us regulate and make sure that the power is consistent throughout the system. There are other traction power facilities which provide connections from PG&E, but those are in south San Francisco and San Jose. These are unmanned station and we hope, we expect the work for these to be done during the day since they're not, they don't impact Caltrain service. So, in general, a lot of the work is done at night, we know that can be an impact to residents, but we do our best to get the word out, and as I mentioned, we do move throughout the corridor pretty quickly. Crews do utilize acoustical blankets on the louder pieces of equipment that help reduce the noise, and we have a dedicated hotline for construction as well. A quick mention of the tunnel work, because it does impact our riders and it does impact service, so we are doing work in the four San Francisco tunnels that Caltrain runs through. We are doing grouting and notching to allow us to have the new electric trains run through those tunnels, as well as installing anchor bolts, which are just pieces of equipment on top of, on the top of the tunnels, that will have a conductor rail that will allow us to electrify the system as well. There is some drainage and track work that's being done as well. We're doing survey work this month and start actual construction in October. The impact for the customers is that we will have weekend shutdowns of service north of Bay Shore Station, so if somebody is going to 22nd Street or San Francisco Station in San Francisco, they will need to get on a bus bridge provided by Samtrans, so they'll get off at Bay Shore and then connect to 22nd and San Francisco via bus bridge. That will be for 20, 26, or 24 consecutive weekends, October 6th through March 17th. Weekend, weekday service will remain unchanged and any service south of Bay Shore will also remain unchanged. I encourage anybody to sign up for our weekly updates for construction at calmon.org/getinvolved. We also have good social media getting the word out about this project, and we have a construction outreach office in 2121 South El Camino Real in San Mateo. We do physical notices, we do mailers, half a mile, excuse me, a quarter mile from the track, and any discreet impacts, we do door hangers, which you can see on the right. And this is how to get in touch with us, if anybody has any questions about the project, wants to learn more, I encourage you to go to calmon.org and just learn more and give us a call or email us if you have any questions. Happy to take any questions now as well.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Council questions?
Actually, thank you for the much improved outreach to the communities. I, I live on Tulare Street, which is right above the train tracks.
Sure.
And many years ago, it was quite a nightmare and a poor city manager heard from me more than once that, can't those guys just get on the phone and let us know when they're gonna do this and we can sleep in a different room? So, I really appreciate it. And if they might even think that when, when you're in Brisbane, all the line of sight houses, we hear all the work that goes on up at the Bay Shore Station.
Sure.
So, that. So that quarter-mile thing, maybe you might want to do a little bit more outreach for that, please?
Yeah, we'll take a look into that. Always happy to hear suggestions. You guys know the community best and know how to get out to them, so we'll take that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Brent, for the presentation. So one of the things that Caltrain has been doing to get ready for electrification is digging that trench, running that conduit. And part of the plan was to provide space in the conduit for high-speed internet. So can you give us an update on where that is?
My turn to Casey Fromson for that answer.
Anticipating that question.
How you doing, Casey? You knew I was going to ask her that. The Director of Government and Community Affairs at Caltrain. So what you're referring to is the Positive Train Control Project, which is actually separate from the electrification project, but under the umbrella of the Caltrain Monitorization One. That project is still underway since you last heard about it. It's taken us a little longer. We will have to get back to you on what the status is of potentially selling some of the conduit. So we have conduit that we're putting into the ground as part of that project, and we're building in extra spaces. So if somebody else wanted to run broadband or some type of other fiber in there, that there'd be space and an opportunity to do so. So that project is still ongoing, and we're happy to get back to you with that specific question on the status of extra available conduit.
Yeah, that'd be great, Casey. And then my other question is regarding the pole heights. So we have a bridge that goes over the train tracks. So looking at 30 to 45 and a half feet, is that an issue potentially with the bridge?
No, so underneath the bridges, there'll be different attachments. So they'll have bridge attachments underneath the bridge. And then also, there are going to be additional barriers needed for safety reasons on any bridge that goes over Caltrain.
Okay. And what about potentially for high-speed rail? Is that bridge height going to be a problem?
Yeah.
I'll jump in with this one, too. It should be fine, for the most part. The infrastructure that we're putting in place for the electrification project is compatible with high-speed rail. It's not, every single component is exactly what high-speed rail needs, but the general height of the poles, that shouldn't be something that is inconsistent with high-speed rail in the future, so there shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Yeah, thank you all.
Any other questions? No?
Could you repeat the dates that you're expecting the potholing and the work to be done in Brisbane?
Yes, so potholing, we have done one pass in Brisbane already for potholing. We expect to come back in December, and we'll be sure to have you guys noticed as well when that happens.
And you anticipate that it's two months' worth of work in Brisbane? You said when they were coming through.
For potholing, it could be about a month to two months. That doesn't mean we're out there every night, but we'll make sure that we have more accurate, more precise dates than that.
I really appreciate that you mentioned that your construction crews are going to be using acoustical blankets and other sound deadening features, because...
Yeah, so we have made the pass of potholing in Brisbane, and we did not receive any complaints from residents in this city, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Ingrid, we have a copy of the presentation, right? Okay, good. Consent calendars, anybody wish to pull anything? I had made a couple small corrections already on it.
Yeah, I'd like to pull F and H, please.
F and?
H.
F and G?
H. H.
H, okay. Anybody else? And entertain a motion for A through E, G, I, J, K.
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of the second for those items, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item F, clip.
All right, let me just pull that. Yeah, I just, it was really just pulling it just for acknowledging, you know, how responsible the council is in addressing our pension obligations. And apparently, there's, what, four cities in the county that are setting aside funds in a special fund, Stuart? And I was just curious to know which other cities besides us are doing that.
I would have to look it up. I don't know off the top of my head.
That's right, I looked through it and I didn't, I couldn't find it, but yeah, just thought it was...
Yeah.
You know, just letting folks know that we are responsible with our financial obligations and, you know, these things. You know, I mean, it's going to be hurting a lot of cities in regards to trying to be able to make ends meet, so. Thank goodness we have, you know, proper funding coming into the city. So with that, I would approve item F.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then on item H, in regards to the business license tax regarding the charge to Kinder Morgan. So Stuart, have we received 2017 yet, or we will receive it after tonight?
We have to approve it first.
We have to approve it first.
So that way, we can then bill it.
And then we'll bill it, okay. All right, and that was just my question there, so I would approve item H.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. That brings us to new business, item A.
So it was Redwood City and Burlingame or the other two?
Okay, so there was three then, okay. Three total in the county. Okay, thanks.
Okay, item A, authorize the executive director to sign the residential purchase agreement for Housing Authority to purchase Unit D at 1 San Bruno Avenue. Clay, I guess you're the executive director. Or Michael.
I'll...
Okay.
Chair Godwin, members of the Brisbane Housing Authority. Over the years, the city has offered a number of financial assistance programs to help residents and local employees obtain affordable housing within the city. And part of that program was to adopt, in the early 2000s, a first-time homebuyer program that basically allowed eligible purchasers to, who have low or moderate incomes, to buy property within Brisbane. And then the redevelopment agency would provide part of the funding by way of a silent second on the property, so that the purchaser would have to go out and get a first deed of trust, but then the redevelopment agency would carry the second. And that would basically be on a interest-free and not having to pay back the principal on the loan that the purchaser would get. And so what happened was, this program was used for one of the units at 1 San Bruno Avenue, Unit D. And at that time, the purchaser was able to purchase a unit for around $420,000. But again, part of that, part of that price, $185,000, was this first-time homebuyer second loan. As you know, the redevelopment agencies were dissolved in 2011, and the Housing Authority, well, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, authorized the Housing Authority to essentially administer the low and moderate income housing funds that the redevelopment agency used to administer. Earlier this year, the Housing Authority received a notice from the purchaser of Unit D and 1 San Bruno that the purchasers, the owners, wanted to sell their property and move on to buy something else. We considered this matter in, and we met in closed session to talk about what the prospects were for the purchaser to, or for the seller, to find an eligible purchaser so that the Housing Authority would not have to come into title, and could find a new purchaser to buy the property, and that would make it simpler and cleaner. Directed staff to work with a consulting realtor to try to market the property, and those efforts were underway, or took underway during the months of May, June, and July. Unfortunately, because the way the program was set up in the early 2000s, it doesn't really comport with the kinds of programs and financing that lenders will use in today's market. And as a result of that, we were not able to find a lender whose criteria met the income levels of the applicants that we did receive. Because there's a deadline to sort of fish or cut bait with respect to this property, we met in closed session to talk about the Housing Authority now stepping in, buying the property back from the sellers. And then the Housing Authority would consider amending the program criteria in order to make it more attractive to perhaps additional applicants, or make the people who are currently applicants, that the criteria might allow them to purchase the property. And so what we have in front of you tonight is a purchase agreement by which the Housing Authority would purchase this property for $500,269. But again, part of that money is the $189,000, $185,000 loan, so it's just really a paper transaction. In addition, because the way that the documents are drafted, the Housing Authority will recover some of the shared appreciation that has occurred on the property. So there will be money coming back into the housing and the low-income and housing fund as a result of this transaction. And then certainly, when the property is sold to an eligible purchaser, the low and moderate income housing fund will be reimbursed. One of the questions that came up during the closed session concerned a lawsuit that was filed concerning the property alleging certain defects in the construction. The lawsuit was settled in 2013. I've contacted the attorney who represented the plaintiff in that case, the plaintiff being the homeowners association and the various members. And that attorney did indicate to me that the proceeds of that settlement were used to cure the various defects that were alleged in the complaint. So with that in mind, we are recommending that the Housing Authority authorize the executive director to sign the purchase agreement. And as mentioned, we will be bringing back to the Housing Authority revisions to the first-time homebuyer program that'll make this project, or make this program eligible, make more people eligible to be able to participate in the program. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer it.
Okay, council questions?
Nope.
Harry?
Thank you for getting the information about the defect lawsuit. On the, a couple of questions. In the contract, we state that we'll be, well, in the staff report, we say we're going to be paying the homeowner's fees and the homeowner's HOA fees once we purchase the property. And what kind of amount is that per month? That is, that and property tax would be the only liability that the city has during the transition period?
Correct. We would seek an exemption on the property taxes from the county. Typically, property owned by the Housing Authority is exempt from property taxes, so we would seek an exemption on that. But we would have to pay the monthly HOA dues. Julie obtained that for me and gave it to me, and I'm just not recalling what it is. I want to say it's the neighborhood of about $225 a month is what I'm recalling, but I don't have that specific information, but I will provide that to the Housing Authority.
Okay. And then the, in the document itself for the loan?
Yes.
On, with the other costs that we're splitting, transfer fees, we're splitting move-in, move-out fees, and then final HOA demands? Do you know what those, I don't quite understand what final HOA demands would be?
Typically, an HOA demand is that when there is a request for a new purchaser to buy a property that has an HOA situation, they provide a number of documents, CCNRs, and financial statements and things of that nature. And there's usually a cost of around between $50 and $100 for those informations, so that's the HOA demand.
Okay. And have we done the, so... And when I purchased a condo, we couldn't look at those HOA financials until an offer was made, and there was basically an offer on the table? And I don't know if that's usual in HOAs, but do we know the fiscal health of the HOA, or have we done any research into that?
We, I don't know that answer precisely. I know we've been working with a realtor who has been working with the seller with respect to that. There is certainly a contingency provision under this purchase agreement, and so we will have, you know, roughly 30 to 45 days to complete our due diligence. And if during that period, we would discover that there is some fiscal issues with respect to the property, we would certainly have the ability not to pursue this matter.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, because that can be very problematic, especially for an agency or for a new homeowner to come in and find out that there's going to be some sort of balloon payment or problem with...
Some assessment, for example, some huge assessment that's going to come due and...
Correct, or that they don't have enough reserves that meet the financials. So I wanted to make sure that we had looked that over and made sure that the HOA itself was in fiscal health.
We will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Madison?
No, I don't have any questions.
Karen?
I don't have any questions.
Cliff?
No, I'll make a motion, though.
Okay.
To approve authorizing the executive director to sign the residential purchase agreement for the Housing Authority to purchase Unit D, 1 San Bruno Avenue.
I'll second that.
So a motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you, Michael, for the update. And we come to item B, which is approved resolution number 2018-64 and GVMID resolution number 2018-02, authorizing the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, the acronym is BOSCA, to negotiate amendments to the water supply and agreement with the city and county of San Francisco. And Randy, I guess you're going to give us a scintillating update on...
Well, I hope to scintillate, yes, sir.
What's going, and also with this tonight is our BOSCA representative, Seppi Richardson.
Well, thank you, sir, you took my lead in. So I'm happy to give this report on BOSCA as your Director of Public Works for the City of Brisbane, and also as your appointee to the BOSCA Board representing GVMID. And as you noted, Seppi's here, and Seppi is your appointee to the board representing the City of Brisbane Water System. The request before you is completely consistent with what BOSCA's founding mission is. It's something that they've done for us over the course of two decades. Quite frankly, of the 26-member agencies, there may be one or two that possibly have the staff who would have the skill set necessary to do it, but none of those 26-member agencies have the experience and the time working with SFPUC really to be able to do this on their own. So this request is being made of us, it's being made of all the other member agencies. I anticipate that it's going to pass 100%. There's no reason somebody would want to go off and negotiate it on their own, particularly because you've been paying dues to BOSCA, and this is one of the things that you asked them to do. I do want to be clear that one of the things that we are not considering in this amendment to the water supply agreement that I presume you're going to authorize BOSCA to negotiate on your behalf is a change to our supply guarantee or the individual supply allowance that we have. That's not what's on the table. The items that are on the table may look small, but they actually are somewhat significant. So I'll just cover two of them for you briefly. One of them is the allocation of water during a drought. So that allocation system is rather complex when you break it down to all the member agencies, but primarily, what's on the table here is a discussion of how SFPUC divvies up water during a drought between themselves and between the wholesale member agencies. Right now, the program isn't really consistent with the messaging and the requirements that we're getting from the State Water Resources Control Board, so it's very important to us that we update that. One of the items that's very important to SFPUC is how we assign, how we name certain types of capital assets. And the reason that's important is that across their portfolio and their inventory, we look at their assets, and we either define them as providing water, providing power, or providing both. And the reason that is so important is that because how that asset is classified defines how much we pay for its repair and its replacement. So if an asset just provides water and only water, then the Bay Area Water Supply Conservation Agency, folks, we are 2/3 of the consumers of that water, so we pay 2/3 of the cost. If it's listed as power-only, then that's a power asset that provides electricity to the city and county of San Francisco, so they pay 100% of the cost. And if it's split, if it provides both, then we share the cost in an appropriate allocation. So those two things are fairly important. So that's what this is about. I'm happy to answer questions, I'm sure Seppi would be happy to answer, too. And if you'd give me a few minutes after you vote on this, I have an update on an item that's related to BOSCA, but not... that's related to BOSCA but not related to your vote on this matter.
Okay.
I just kind of do it at the end to keep them clear so they're separate.
All right. Any questions for Randy? Or, Seppi, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I think we have the most qualified member of BOSCA.
Oh. And congratulations on your recent nuptials.
Thank you.
You look happy.
I am. It's a miracle to just do my own thing and right around the corner to meet a wonderful person that I can have a future with. So BOSCA has absolutely put a lot of trust and integrity and reliance on Randy's presence at the BOSCA meetings. He's been a rock. He's been very knowledgeable. So I wholeheartedly support what he has brought before the council. And both of us, our primary goal is to make sure that the interest of Brisbane is not absolutely impacted negatively or the interest of our community members.
Great.
Thank you for approval.
Thanks, Seppi.
Thanks, Seppi.
And I have you an email, by the way. I'll get you.
So, okay. Any council questions regarding this item? I'd entertain a motion if not.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve, let's see, both resolutions, SA 2, excuse me, Number 2018-64 and GVMID Resolution Number 2018-02? All right?
Yes.
So a motion and a second for both of those? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Randy, give us that update because I guess there's a lot of controversy about this going on.
Lot of stuff going on, yes, sir. So that's why I wanted to talk to you. This is a SED update, not a TED Talk. It's a SED, S-E-D, update. And I believe I first briefed you back in December 2016 about the State Water Resources Control Board, a state agency whose chair and board members are directly appointed by the governor, releasing a draft plan on the revised substitute environmental document for the 2006 water quality control plan for the San Francisco Bay Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta Estuary. Thank God they use the acronym SED for that because it's really a big mouthful. So in its role of preserving the water quality of the state, the State Water Resources Control Board is now proposing to increase the amount of unimpaired flows from the San Joaquin River tributaries, which are the Tuolumne, the Stanislaus, and the Merced Rivers, into the delta. SFPUC's model indicates that increasing unimpaired flows to a value of 40% translates to significant reductions or diversion for drinking water, including potential reductions of up to 50% during droughts for SFPUC customers. So just to put that in some context, during the last drought, we had a 25% reduction. So this would double that amount. Perhaps even more importantly, I think, to note is that a 50% reduction for our residential customers would leave us with 25 gallons per person per day, which is just at the level defined as necessary to provide some minimum acceptable quality of life. The SFPUC also believes that such a reduction would result in the loss of $200,000 jobs and have a $49 billion negative impact on the economy. Obviously, they oppose that proposal, and they note that optimizing a flow schedule rather than just having 40% flow at all times and then implementing some other non-flow measures to improve the fishery habitat could meet the goals of the SED without the negative impact on residential and business customers. Some of the NGOs, the Tuolumne River Trust, for instance, and others, argue that the SFPUC computer model is flawed. They argue that the predicted impacts are grossly overstated and that even higher year-round flows should be required. So it's complicated. To make it even more complicated is that Governor Brown has brought in Bruce Babbitt, the former Secretary of the Interior of the United States under President Clinton and also a former governor of the state of Arizona, to facilitate what they're calling voluntary settlement agreement discussions amongst the stakeholders. Now, that's sort of interesting because there are many parties that are entitled to hear the information that comes from it, but not everybody's invited to the table. So for instance, BOSCA, representing us, is allowed to get the information that happens at the discussion, but they're not directly at the table. So SFPUC is directly at the table. And just because of the nature of the confidentiality agreement, I can't even tell you who the other people are that Mr. Babbitt has invited in to have these conversations. So, but the voluntary settlement has a lot of support for it instead of just this directive that's come from the State Water Board. Most recently, the California Natural Resources Agency came on board and sent the State Board a letter saying, hey, we support this. The Department of Water Resources did. California Department of Fish and Wildlife did. And letters by Senator Hill and Assemblymember Court. So the takeaway that I would leave you with this is that BOSCA and its member agencies support the objectives of the Bay Delta Plan. Many people try to frame this as a fight between people and fish and the environment. And there's no doubt that there are multiple competing interests for it. I personally look at it now, though, as you start to think about environmentalism, I don't think we ought to focus on being in favor of the environment because it's the right thing to do. I think it's important to favor the environment because it's important for us as people. We all want a healthy ecosystem on this biosphere that we're rotating around the sun on. And having an adequate amount of water for people who need to drink and wash, for people who farm, for people who have commercial interests that they use water is important. But it's also equally important to have a strong ecosystem. And that's not just the rivers, it's the riparian areas adjoining the rivers. But it's also important to have anadromous fish. Those fish have been there for hundreds, if not thousands, of years. They provide important benefits to the river. They also provide jobs for fishermen, and they also happen to provide delicious dinners for our table. So I hope that as we continue along on this, that Mr. Babbitt is successful and that we can get voluntary settlement agreements that really, they will be painful for everyone, I think, but I hope that they aren't egregious and most egregious just on one party. So happy to take questions on that if you have any.
Council questions regarding that?
Bless you.
No, no questions, but thank you for your perspective.
Yeah, this has created quite a stir in the whole state, you know, and I know it could be very damaging to us if, you know, it flops to one side, you know. And I think, you know, having all the water run to Southern California for-
Yeah, you know, you're right, sir, because it brings in the other piece that Mr. Babbitt was brought in for by Governor Brown, and that was to work on the delta water fix, which is the tunnels, which would ship more water to Southern California. That would be one of the primary recipients of it. And it's, and I've been remarking with colleagues lately, it is always interesting how politics does indeed make very strange bedfellows. You may have seen that Maloney's Lake, which is a federal project that would be harmed by this, caused the current Secretary of the Interior to step in and say, oh, no, 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 no. The current administration is absolutely opposed to this proposal by the California State Water Resources Control Board, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, I don't think San Francisco is particularly in high regard with the current administration. But then on the other hand, the same Secretary of the Interior said, well, you know, maybe we ought to look a little harder at the Restore Hachachee proposal to knock down O'Shaughnessy Dam. So it's, water has become incredibly more complex than I've seen it in the last 30 or 35 years that I've been involved in it. So we'll see how this all turns out. Hopefully, intelligent minds work on it and people are reasonable and we get to where we need to be.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy. Thank you for your due diligence. And Seppi, thank you for your service on the BOSCA Board, so.
Thank you for allowing me to serve. I really appreciate that. You are the community's man of true nature. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to staff reports, which is city managers' report on upcoming activities. And have a verbal one on Lisa AB or SB 828?
Yeah, I'll get to that in a moment. We've got a slide here that will be before you and available for the TV audience to look at on a number of items that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. San Bruno Mountain Watch will be having their pancake breakfast and native plant sale this, I believe, Sunday.
It's Sunday.
From 9:00 to noon, and the plant sales from 9:00 to 2:00. We have applications due for the Parks and Recreation Day in the Park booths, arts and crafts vendors, community groups, commercial vendors. That is due on Monday, the 10th. On September 14th, we'll have the Brisbane Lions 70th Anniversary Thank You Celebration at Mission Blue from 6:00 to 9:00. And I believe Mayor Protam Davis will be presenting a proclamation on behalf of the city. On the 15th, as stated earlier tonight by Nancy Coleman, the Brisbane Village Helping Hands Fall Social at the Senior Sunrise Room from 3:00 to 5:00. There'll also be the Coastal Cleanup Day from 9:30 to 12:30. People can meet at the Sierra Point Yacht Club. On September 22nd, we'll have the San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day at the San Mateo County Events Center. That's a full-day event. And on 9/22 also, we'll have the Friends of the Brisbane Library Ice Cream Social at the Mission Blue Center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And on September 29th, Brisbane Lions Club will be doing a Blue Shot Clinic at the Sunrise Room from 9:00 to noon.
So I have one clarifying, ask a question. On the Coastal Cleanup Day, meet behind the Sierra Point Yacht Club, so we're doing a shuttle over to a part of the coastline to do cleanup? We're not doing it locally?
You know, I'll have to get back to you. I don't know unless anybody else on staff knows for sure. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll get that information and make sure it's clear on our website.
Okay, thank you.
So the second thing I had is just, we put this on our website a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and I may have neglected to actually send it out in a weekly report, but the city did receive a, or will be receiving, a Beacon Program Spotlight Award at the League of Cities Convention in Long Beach this upcoming Thursday. We have a platinum-level award for a 32% agency greenhouse gas reduction. And I believe the mayor and I will be at the reception for that and accept that on behalf of the city. The other item that I wanted to just kind of show you was, as we know, we have an item on the ballot in November, Ballot Measure JJ, that the council authorized back in July. And city staff is going to, we're working on a frequently asked questions sheet that will be on our website. But in addition to that, we are working on a brochure of this type, working with the city attorney. As a matter of fact, the city attorney brought this to me. This is actually one from Alameda. City of Mountain View, if you go on their website, has a number of things like this with regards to a couple of ballot measures that they're doing also. This will be a fact-based document that we will mail out to the community just to inform them on what ballot measure JJ is. It's not an advocacy piece. And because of that, the city staff will be working on this. We won't be consulting with the council on the content of it, but we will be working through that with the city attorney.
Okay.
And, oh, yeah, yes. So there was a couple of questions with regards to ballot measure, or not ballot measure, state legislative actions. So it has been my intent to have Tom McMurro, our legislative lobbyist from Sacramento, come and make a presentation to the council on the end of the legislative session and give you the full, not only content of the bills that were passed, but also kind of the flavor of what's happening in Sacramento as he and his staff are there on a day-to-day basis and in the trenches, as you know. There are two bills I know that are of particular interest. One of them is SB 828, and I'll give a very brief overview of that. As I understand it, that is headed to the governor for potential signature, and he has until September 30th to do that. 828 is a RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment, bill. And I think it can best be described that here, up till now, there's been a kind of a tacit understanding between local government and the state government that cities do planning and we do zoning, and private sector does the actual production of housing. 828 starts to move that dial and starts to create some accountability for cities in terms of the actual production. Now, how that happens and what does that mean in terms of rulemaking by the state and how that gets enforced, I think is probably an open question. But it is probably just one more example of the state kind of coming into local government affairs that have historically been local government affairs and putting more restrictions or at least in this case, perhaps more pressure for cities to do things. Be interesting in this case how this plays out because obviously, we're not the private sector and we don't build the housing. But you can imagine what sort of sanctions the state might come up with or some processes they may develop around this. So that's a bill that is headed to the governor. Mayor Conway will be signing a request for a veto on this bill as well as the next bill I'm going to talk about, which I think is actually even more troubling. And that's SB, or no, AB, AB 2923, popularly referred to in the media as the BART bill, Bay Area Rapid Transit. While this bill obviously does not directly impact the City of Brisbane at this particular point in time, I think it is a bill that kind of gives you a flavor of where Sacramento is going. This is a overt, blatant usurpation of historical local land use control by the state to, in this case, a regional agency that has no experience, no background, no history of doing land use planning. But they're going to be now in charge of that on their property in, under certain circumstances through their system. So it just kind of gives you a flavor of where the state's mentality is and where they're headed with legislation. We will be getting information about this out on our website as well as 828. And as I indicated, Tom will be speaking to you about this and other issues relative to the end of the legislative session and how he sees not only what the legislature did now, but I think also what we might think could possibly happen in the future and especially with a new governor who has made a number of statements through the campaign, or the most likely candidate to be governor, that have been pro-housing or pro-housing production. So I guess none of this is particularly surprising, but nor necessarily welcomed, but wanted just to give you kind of an overview as information that we have at the moment.
And I also signed a letter asking Governor Brown to veto that bill.
The BART bill.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. All right. That brings us to mayor council matters. And, you know, we've got the League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions, and Karen and I, I think, will both be attending along with our Public Works Director and City Manager and City Attorney. And I don't know who else. That's it, right?
Yeah.
Five of us, okay. So in our packet, we have some proposed resolutions and the council wishes to take position on. These are some suggestions in here. And on two resolutions, the first one, this is sponsored by the City of Beverly Hills, and it's asking to lead to explore preparation of a ballot measure, a constitutional amendment to further strengthen local democracy and authority. The proponents offer SB 649, a failed measure that would have allowed telecommunications companies to place small cells, city-owned poles and structures, subject only to administrative permit. And SB 827, the stalled measure that would have overridden local control on housing developments within a half mile of a major transit stop or within a quarter mile of a quality bus corridor as proof of consideration that their request is necessary. And of course, we have experienced that ourselves within the last year. And so the suggestion is to approve this measure. And the council, okay with that?
I am.
To vote for it, in favor of it?
Yes.
Yeah, whatever staff has suggested, I'm good with that.
And then the second resolution is the one sponsored by City of Malibu. And this resolution asks the league to support the repeal of the California Food and Agricultural Code 11501.1, which preempt cities from regulating- Agricultural Code eleven-five-oh-one-point-one, which preempt cities from regulating pesticides on private property within their city limits. Resolution also asks the league to consider creating a task force to study unintended negative consequences of anticoagulant rodent, rodenticides. So.
So as I'm reading this, I'm assuming that means we would like to study and be able to ban rodenticides if we wish to, to repeal, is what this measure is about?
Yeah.
And I know that in the staff comments, that City of Brisbane currently disallows that on their property and that we've had multiple citizens' requests. I also wanted to mention that it's been brought up by the Open Space and Ecology Committee many times to have something like this on the books. So with that, I would also recommend that we support that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so good. That's that, so off to Long Beach next week, and we'll miss you.
Have fun.
Thank you. Item B, which is county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports. So who wants to start off? Do we have, do we have a list? Let's start off at the top of our list. This is the Madison and Karen on the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Why don't I take the first one? You can take the second one.
Sure.
Okay. So the committee met with the representatives from Sangamo and their chosen artists, Gordon Hutha, to discuss the proposed art installation that they would like to have installed out at Sierra Point in front of their property. The project concept will be reviewed again by Park and Rec Commission and the council in October. It is Sangamo's goal to have the art installed in the spring. I think what struck all of us in that meeting was how incredible the work of Gordon Hutha was. I think gobsmacked was probably the right term that we could use for everybody sitting in that room. It was absolutely stunning. So I look forward to our next meeting and having a look with what they come up with, the budget they have. I think it'll be a really exciting thing for Brisbane, and yeah, if that's the, the tone of where we're going with our public art moving forward, we are very, very lucky.
Yes, definitely.
Nice.
Okay. We also met for, with the Park and Rec liaisons, Commissioner Marmion and Commissioner Covino, or Chair Covino, to discuss the Park and Rec's annual report. And we had Kennedy War discussions about Day in the Park concerts, or not Day in the Park, Concerts in the Park and the Star City Music Festival. We also talked a little bit about Mission Blue and Improvements. And then we moved on to talk about Volunteer of the Year, and eventually, we selected Volunteer of the Year. So just kind of like a meeting to touch base with them. We usually do it on probably an annual basis, just to get a sense for like the projects that they've completed and the projects that they're looking to complete, and kind of some of our input about, you know, the work that they've been doing. So it was a very productive meeting.
Okay, and then yesterday, Madison and I had a history subcommittee meeting, and in regards to the video project, and this is an item that we discussed during the budget, and we're going to come back on our October fourth meeting with more information that was requested by the council at our budget meeting. So, and, you know, talked about the importance of digitizing and what that takes, you know, it's not just using a cellphone or something like that, but also with the term OCR, Optical Characterization Recognition Cameras, on taking print and putting that into a digitized history-making project, such as the Brisbane Bee's and stuff like that, and so what it would take. And there's also some other options that you're going to be looking at as reduced costs of the camera equipment and stuff like that. So we have a volunteer that would provide it, to have spare equipment on site without the cost to the city of Brisbane. That's it.
Nice.
So that'll be coming October fourth meeting. And then we have up, upcoming subcommittee meetings.
I have a couple of reports for meetings.
Oh, you do? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Terry, sorry.
It's okay. They just weren't local meetings. They were away meetings. We had an Airport Noise Committee meeting that, or San Francisco Roundtable, and it was very interesting, because the, we now have the FAA that will come and give answers to specific questions. It was a learning curve, because it turns out that you needed to give them the questions thirty days in advance, so that they could prepare for the questions and bring the correct experts to answer the questions. And when the questions were asked in the meeting, and we were informed that we could only ask those questions and could only discuss what was previously asked, because they didn't want to back themselves into a corner, they said that, of the questions that were asked, that they couldn't answer those questions because they weren't phrased right.
Oh, give me a break.
So basically, they got three experts from out of town to tell us that those questions weren't asked the proper way after they studied them for thirty days.
How many questions were asked?
Three questions that were, you know, specific questions that, that the sub, that the Roundtable had, and that the public, you know, was a little upset that they wouldn't have, you know, open dialogue with these representatives. But it was a, a learning curve for the Roundtable itself. Most of the Roundtable was pretty pissed that.
Oh, my God.
That we were limited, and then also, we were given completely, well, we can't answer that, because this wasn't phrased correctly. So it's a learning curve, and we're going to work on perfecting that so that it doesn't happen again that way.
You mean, you got to take a class in how to ask a question?
How to ask a government entity a question, yes.
Why am I not surprised?
And it turns out that it, they were looking for something that is very specific, and, you know, they could not answer something off the cuff when you'd, you'd ask about a particular procedure, because that wasn't spelled out, that that's where they wanted to go, and they had no idea if it hadn't been given to them in advance. So that was frustrating for all the members present, but I think it's a learning curve in it. That won't happen again, as far as that kind of procedure.
We wonder why Congress is dysfunctional.
Yes, well, I, I think it's all called, you know, everybody wants to cover themselves and not give the wrong answer, you know, and only if you're not approved to speak on a subject, then you can't speak on that subject. So again, it was a learning curve. I had two local policymaker group meetings, and the timeline for some of the electrification information that we got the present, presentation on, and then also on the high-speed rail, which again is, you know, delayed and doesn't have a lot of information. The second meeting we had, we did not, we were short one person for a quorum, so we could not even receive the presentation. So i- in their bylaws, if you do not have a quorum, you cannot, not only can you not take action, you cannot listen to the reports.
Aye, aye, aye.
So that was somewhat of a waste.
It even happens at the local level.
Sounds like you had fun, Terry.
Yes, it was a nice drive to San Carlos.
Ah.
Anyway, so those were my three meetings, and I know that we, Councilmember Davis and I have another Noise Committee meeting, and will be working with, hopefully with some other jurisdictions to come up with some ideas on how we can further reduce noise impacts through, from S.F.O.
You know, I have a question for you, Terry. So what's the status of the Roundtable, Roundtable's chair trying to expand the Roundtable? Has that been put to rest, or are they, she still?
No, I don't think it has been put to rest. It is a contentious issue, and it was not brought up at our last meeting, because it, it didn't get agendized for, for that discussion. But we're having, at the Roundtable, we are having a lot of the speakers, and I would say probably over fifty percent are from Palo Alto South, and they're very concerned about the arrivals and feel that the arrivals noise is as loud as the departures noise. And the.
No data to support that, though.
And then there, also, we had a report on the G.A.S.B., which is the Ground Air Guidance Program, where they bring in planes, in a nutshell, bring them in slower, at a more of a glide.
Mm-hmm.
So that they're not having to use air brakes. And so there was quite a bit of discussion on that and how that would be simulated and tested and made sure that it's not going to be narrowing the tracks over one particular area, but it sounds like, along with most of the other enhanced performance type of programs that they're doing, that it will narrow the band and, and make the noise more concentrated. So.
Mm-hmm.
We, we have to see how that plays out.
All right, thank you.
Cliff, you have any updates?
Um, you know, I did attend this one working group. It's through C.CAG, trying to, trying to create a, an action plan for the San Mateo County Transportation Plan, and so making some good progress there. We're using, actually, the sustainability framework, not the, not the model itself, but just, you know, creating performance indicators and then having action plans to make the plan more accountable. Originally, the transportation plan was just, hey, let's, let's create this plan because we need to in order to get funding, but there wasn't any, you know, moving the needle, so to speak. And so this document is, been moving along at a pretty good pace, and we have one more meeting coming up before we present it to C.CAG.
Anything else?
I have one small thing. So today, I attended the Green Building Business Certification Luncheon. I think that's what it was called.
Oh, is it here?
Yeah, here. That, that was really interesting. I mean, I was interested in it from a personal perspective, because I do run my business from my home. There was a lot of great information, including water-saving stuff. So I'll just write a, a note off to City Manager tomorrow or something and let you know how that went, but I, I think it's probably going to be very useful for our local small businesses, for sure.
Great. Okay, so our upcoming subcommittee meetings, our Public Arts Advisory Committee is on nine-eleven. Economic Development Subcommittee is on nine-nineteen. Public Information Technology is also on nine-nineteen. Airport Noise Subcommittee would be nine-twenty-six. Public Guard Advisory Committee on, is tentatively scheduled for ten-two, and Infrastructure Subcommittee Meeting on ten-three. Okay, with that, we'll move on to City Council meeting schedule. So we have a schedule here, so it's being proposed that the regular meeting of September twentieth be canceled due to two of us will be out of town. And so ask the three of you, do you wish to cancel it? Because there's nothing, Clay, do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, when reviewing the calendar, there's nothing that's time-sensitive for the twentieth. So we, and then, and the fourth is fairly light at the moment, so there is not a logistical problem with canceling the twentieth and moving those items to the fourth.
I'm good with canceling the meeting.
I have no problem.
Just didn't.
Okay. All right, so let's strike that one. Okay. Carry that, all right. And item D, which is Written Communications, and had numerous from Tony Varios on seven-twenty, eight-twenty-four, nine-three, and then one from Danny Ames on eight-sixteen. And that's it for that. And brings us to Oral Communications, number two. Anybody wish to address the council? Not seeing anybody jump out of their seats. Okay, so we'll move on to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. So why, I, I have a question. The public meeting videos is after adjournment? So we're going to have videos now?
Want to comment on that?
Just notes for the public to know where to locate our public meeting videos online.
Okay.
Okay, wow, nine P.M. on the nose. Imagine that. I haven't had a meeting like that.
No, I thought it might be light.